This was really good.
Great. Should probably shave closer now. Hello, welcome to the October 12th Select Board Meeting on a Thursday night. So I'm going to call it FinCom a couple of times because they used to meet on Thursday. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting. We have Aaron Underhill and Ellen Rosenfeld, our clerk and our vice chair tonight with me. And Mike Kuzinski, our town manager, is home. He could not make it in due to, I don't know if I should announce it. Is it public knowledge?
He's under the weather.
He's under the weather.
Covid.
Covid, okay, there we go. Covid, and we invited him not to come in.
And I have not seen him directly. We've been ships passing, so I am good.
All right, so we're going to start with a few announcements. The, let me get to that. And I have a cold, and I've tested, and I do not have Covid.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Yeah, that's what I say.
That's our move over.
I won't be here next week, but he doesn't have Covid, so, you know. There's that.
We have, the first announcement we have is from the DEP. And is this, Jim, is this something with you, or is this, no?
Yeah, Jim, yeah.
So, this is our annual grant that we submit for the DEP for the recycling. And this year, I think it's a little bit more than what we've got in the past. So it's 7,000, I don't know what the exact amount.
$200.
$200, and that will go in if the users of the transfer station. You've note, you see the new compactor that we have, and this has been monies that we saved over the years to pay for that. So this is just an ongoing grant that we get every single year. So we'll be back to the board with what we're going to do with those funds. They can't be, there's specific things that can only be used on, at the transfer station.
Okay, well, great. So thank you for getting a new grant for us.
Thanks.
And I like the compactor. All right, the, we'll share. Next, we have a tri-county outreach meeting on October 17th, and they're serving ice cream. Ice Cream Social. Tri-County Regional Tech High School Superintendent will be there, and the Business Administrator. And it's being held at the Senior Center on October 17th. At what time? At 11:30 a.m. It's early in the day for ice cream for me, so I'll probably pass. But 11:30, October 17th, Senior Center, Ice Cream Social, to discuss the new, the plans for the tri-county high school, which is voted on October 24th. And we will be talking about that in more detail later tonight. Okay, next, we have the flu clinic. Thank you. She's going to keep adding me things, and I'll just keep looking at them. So there's a flu clinic Saturday, October 21st, from 10:00 to 12:00 in the gym at the Veterans Memorial Building. Please bring your insurance information, and if you don't have insurance, you can still receive a vaccination free of charge. And it's being hosted by the Board of Health. This is for ages eight and up, again, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 21st, in the gym. And then lastly, for the items that we have here, I have an announcement about the tri-county school. Jane, Lisa, if you'd like to come up.
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. The special election for the tri-county school project and Millis debt exclusion question is Tuesday, October 24th. It's not very far away. It's a week from next Tuesday. Voting will be at the Town Hall 12 noon to 8:00 p.m. This is different from most elections when we're open at 7:00. We won't, we will not be open until noon. Absentee ballots are available now. You can send a written application to the Town Clerk's office and have ballots mailed to you, or you can come in person to the office during regular business hours and vote right there. The voter registration deadline, if you're not already registered for this election, is this Saturday, the day after tomorrow, October 14th, at 5:00 p.m. The Town Clerk's office will be open all day this Saturday, 9:00 to 5:00, for voter registration and for in-person voting. You can also register online via a link on the Town Clerk's webpage or at the Secretary of State's website. If you do vote by mail, we recommend that you return the ballots by depositing them in the ballot box at the rear of Town Hall by the entrance to the Senior Center, rather than mailing them, since time is so short. And you can always call our office with any questions. I just want to recommend, if somebody could give a little update about the library event on Saturday?
I have that, actually, unless you want to do it.
No, you can do it.
We've got it covered someplace.
So we have, I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, we have three events that are upcoming this weekend, too. I just wanted to remind people, as our clerk has mentioned, the Friends of the Library Public Event. I'm sorry, Friends of the Millis Public Library Event. It, Open House, will be held at the library. It's commemorating 40 years of fundraising and volunteer support by the Friends. It's also celebrating 10 years of the new library building. That's located at 961 Main Street. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 14th, so something fun to swing by. And then we have a blood drive hosted by the Millis Fire Department. That would be before. Also on Saturday, October 14th, that's happening at the Fire Department in the Bays, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. It's always important to give blood, if you have a chance, to stop by there. And then the following day, it's the Fire Prevention Open House at the fire station. That's always fun. There will be an appearance by Sparky and Friends, station tours, giveaways, and meet the firefighters. Fun for all ages. So that's Sunday, October 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So busy weekend in Millis, if anyone is looking for things to do.
Great. Okay, next up on the agenda. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
And one more, and we have one more announcement.
It's great that we have announcements, that we have an active town. It's great. So a quick update on the paving. I think people can finally see it's done. The sidewalks are finally installed on Pleasant Street. People can, in, I actually smiled driving into work this morning to seeing people walking on them and actually using them. Driveway aprons on a couple of the streets that were paved still need to be completed. But the reason for this announcement is, this Sunday, due to all the rain and all of a sudden turning cold, the line painting has been pushed off. So we're trying to get that done during the day, because it'll dry quicker and it'll be a more permanent type situation. So this Sunday, starting at 10:00 a.m., we will be shutting down the roads that have been paved incrementally. You know, so they're not going to have all of them closed down. They'll close one down, they'll do their work, move on to the next one. So we'll have police details there and DPW workers with D2 signs, you know, showing how to get in and out. And the one good thing, once they put it down, it doesn't take hours for these roads to be closed. They got to get it down, and the drying truck goes over them. So we're talking a minimal, once it's closed down, completely closed down, the truck gets up and down it. You may be talking about an hour to two hours for each different road. So, and it's, if it's not going to be done on Sunday, it'll be done on Tuesday going into Wednesday morning.
Do you have the names of those roads offhand?
We do. Plain Street from Main Street to Village. Pleasant Street, we're going to put the fog lines on Pleasant Street, so it will delineate the end of the road and where the sidewalks begin. We purposely didn't put them on last year because of, we knew we were going to do the sidewalks. Auburn Road and the Village Street from the intersection of Pleasant to Himmelfob, Akon, Akon Street.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add, all of these announcements are on our website. So if you go to the Town of Millis website, millisma.gov, on the homepage or some of the other pages, we have things as well.
Karen knows because she puts them on.
I do know, I put them on. And then also on our Town of Millis Facebook page, if you follow the Town of Millis, we try to put all of the announcements out there as well. So it's a good way to stay informed.
Great. All right, any other announcements? I'm scared to ask, because everybody seems to have one. Carol, anything? No, okay, all right. So next item up I have is the appointment of a school building committee member. No, I've got it, we're okay. We're okay. We can share, it'll work perfectly.
All right, fair enough.
So the appointment of the school building committee member. Who is this person replacing? Anna Hurley is the middle school principal?
Yes, so it's a non, she's a non-voting member. So it's just updating from the former middle school principal. His name is escaping me.
Okay, so this is just a replacement position because our middle school principals have changed? So this is, in the email from Rich Nichols, it says a voting member, but this is a non-voting.
It is a non-voting.
All right.
You ready?
I'll take a motion.
Okeydoke.
I'll pay attention.
Pay attention. I moved at the board appoint Anna Hurley as a non-voting member to the school building committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Anna Hurley as a non-voting member to the school building committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Do we have to open the special permit?
You do have to open the hearing, and it is 7:10, so you're good to go.
Perfect, we're just stalling to get to the right moment to open.
And, and my apologies, I wrote Dan Merrigan, this is not Dan Merrigan. We have, we have Ted instead, and I'm not sure. And Tony Ma is our GCG, he's from GCG Associates. He's our peer review consultant.
Okay.
For this project.
I'll make, I can make a motion to open the hearing, right? Take a motion.
I make a mo, do we need a motion?
Yeah.
I don't see that on here.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I make a motion to open the hearing for...
Perfect.
Whatever this is, 1375 Main Street.
It's been moved and seconded to open a hearing for 1375 Main Street. It is 7:10, and that's the time it's scheduled, so all in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. All right.
Great, thank you. Ted Cannon, on behalf of the applicant, I'm joined tonight by Jim DiGiorno, who's one of the principals of the applicant, and by Shane Oats from Independence Engineering. So we're here, this is the Colt Manufacturing Building, which everyone's familiar with. And the applicant would like to repurpose the building for a lumber mill. All that is going to be done in the interior. Be, be no exterior construction, no exterior change, except that when you operate a lumber mill, you have to have a dust collection system. And that is an exterior component that gets, kind of like a big dumpster, gets attached to the back and emptied periodically to make sure all that dust gets taken out. That's it. So just some history, some of you may know. The applicant purchased the property early in 2023. This has been a thorn in the building commissioner's side. It was a mess. It was an illegal residential apartment, one of the upper floors. There was a complete buildout by a would-be marijuana facility without any permitting, which the applicant, at their own expense, has had gone in and removed. There was outstanding conservation orders that hadn't been addressed. There was the installation of the solar panels, which hadn't been signed off by the planning board. The applicant has come in and taken care of all of those things. And so they're eager to invest in Millis. They're eager to repurpose the building and think that the addition of a lumber mill would be a great, a great addition to the town. We're here tonight because it does fall in the special flood hazard area and pursuant to the bylaw. Lucky you, you're the special permit granting authority for this use in the special flood hazard district. Really, it kind of is designed for new construction. So a lot, I did prepare something, I can leave with the board if you want, to address each of the special permit criteria. There's a lot of them, but a lot of them really don't apply. So again, the only exterior disturbance is the addition of the dust collection system, so. You know, I can leave the write-up, a lot of it says it does not apply. But, you know, perhaps, oh, just by way of background, we did appear before the Conservation Commission because it closed the resource area. For a request for determination, they made a determination that it's not anything that they would issue an order about because it's, there is no new disturbance. We said if we made any new disturbance, we'd have to be back before the commission, and they agreed. And then on Tuesday night, we were before the planning board for site plan approval, which they did approve. We haven't received the written decision yet, but did have site plan approval. So we've taken those steps, so hopefully we can persuade the board tonight. So if I may, ask Shane to just maybe give the board an overview of the site, the location of the dust collection system, and some information about that.
Good evening, Shane Oats with Independence Engineering. So I have a photograph of a typical dust collection unit and an associated portable dumpster. Those are dumpsters that are emptied regularly. They don't necessarily have to look that long green or have that configuration. But the site is located just north of Main Street. This is the existing building. Existing loading dock to be utilized to the west, parking underneath the new solar array, some parking spaces out front. Total of 41 parking spaces. The new use, we anticipate maybe a handful of spaces being used at the most of the time. So what you're looking at there, the dust collector is actually right here to the rear of the site. And the dumpsters right next to it. This is all paved in the back right now. So again, there's no new impervious disturbances or any disturbance of any kind. All utilities are remaining the same, sewer, electric, gas. So really, very minimal site disturbance at all. So if anyone has any questions related to that, I'm not getting answered.
Just by clarification, this is not a retail facility.
Yeah, what is it exactly?
Sure, Jim, you could...
You say a lumber mill, what is that?
So we take trees locally. We have a facility in Midway, excuse me, Medfield that we store them at. And then we bring them over there, and we mill them into boards that might get sent out for processing by other facilities, or we can turn them into boards, flooring, whatever people might need. So we're taking local trees and resourcing them for either lumber or finished wood products.
So you say it's not retail, so how do people buy it?
We sell to suppliers that would sell to retail.
Okay, and so you say only a handful of spaces are going to be taken. How many employees do you anticipate?
Six to eight.
How many square feet is that thing?
The building's 45,000 square feet ballpark. We have half of it. Colt is in the other half, so just about.
Colt is still in the other half, is what, a tenant of yours?
Yes.
Oh, lucky you.
They're not there often.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So it's pretty automated. There's not, it's not a lot of labor. Not a lot of trucks in or out either.
Okay.
Question?
Not exactly, but we're going to hear from the GCG guy, too, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, no question.
Just curious, okay. All right, and our engineer from GCG?
And I just want to add in the minute here also that this is a public hearing, so we did advertise it in the paper, and we did send notice to all of the butters, so.
Yeah, we'll get to the, anybody in the audience who'd like to comment next.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Anthony Ma with GCG Associates. We've reviewed that these projects, mainly where they propose the dust collector systems, and the dumpster is within the flood hazard areas. And so the conservation had already issued a negative, two, negative determination. So they don't do not, they do not have to file with a notice of intent with Conservation Commissions. We looked at the flood plain in the back of the buildings where the, the proposed equipment is going to be located. So our comments is mainly we want to make sure the equipment will be slightly elevated from the floor, and also it will be anchored down with some kind of foundation systems. We all, we understand that the engineer have difficulties to locate the sewer connections. So we located the sewer connections is in the front of the building toward the Main Street, so it will not get involved with, in the flood plain. So we believe what they proposed, installing in the flood plain area, it is safe and it shouldn't have any adverse impacts to the wetlands or the site. We did ask the applicants to put as much information on the site plan. Many, I believe, the owner would like to see where the water connection, sewer connection, as well as other utilities. And I believe within the flood plain, they are also required to comply with the stormwater management standards based on the MasDEP Stormwater Handbook. So in this case, it's majority is mainly redevelopment, and they're not creating any new impervious areas. So we believe that majority of the standard they will meet. And the only thing is the MasDEP is mandatory, require them to provide some kind of O&M plan. So they should have identified what needs to be maintained, so just provide some kind of agreements with operation and maintenance plan, so they will continue to maintain their drainage systems. I think that will cover pretty much what they proposed.
Okay, and are all those requirements in a letter that they've received? So they're documented as to what we need, the O&M plan and all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So are you okay with, with these recommendations? I don't understand this anchoring thing. What's he?
Oh, the, the, the dust collector sits on six legs, and those will be sitting on foundation.
You're going to pour a foundation?
It's sonotubes, basically.
Okay.
The engineer is just about finalizing the design. So it'll provide gravity resistance, uplift resistance, and any, you know, wind resistance.
Okay.
And it is up off the ground, so the only thing that actually attaches is about an 8x8 tube at six locations.
Okay.
All right. Other questions? No?
I don't have any.
Any questions from the audience? Seeing none and hearing none.
I have one more. So are you, you're not actually in yet?
No.
You, you're, you've really done nothing?
No, right, right.
Because when you get in, take a look at the landscaping.
Oh, it's horrible.
Thank you.
Very disgusting.
Did you? Thank you.
You know I would do.
I know you would have, but, you know, double doesn't hurt. You could do that before you get in, but it's okay.
I knew she was going to say that.
Of course.
All right. Is there a motion?
Oh, a motion!
No, it's not there. You have to move to close the hearing.
I know, I'm going to make one up, because Ted's going to help me. Ted, boy, Ted. Are we ready to approve it, or do you even want to?
You have to close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I moved to close the hearing for 1375.
It's been moved and seconded to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously.
Do you want me to make a motion to approve? Subject to the O&M and the anchoring?
Subject to the O&M and the items that were provided by GCG, yeah.
So Ted, what exactly, what permit are you looking for?
It's a special permit to, for the use under Section 11 of the bylaw.
And what's the use?
I have that right here.
Milling or something.
Milling?
They, they are installing the dust collecting systems within the flood, flood plain area.
But is that the?
That's not...
But that's out the motion.
Yeah, the use is processing and treating of raw materials, including grading, drying, sorting, crushing, grinding.
Oh, really?
Milling.
In milling operations. So it's milling, in milling operations is the one that fits.
You asked, you shouldn't have asked.
You ask a lawyer, that's what you get.
Helen, do you want this right here? You can, that's, may help.
Nothing will hurt here. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the special permit and site plan approval application? Or no?
No.
They're coming together, that's fine.
They come together? For the existing industrial site at 1375 Main Street for repurposing 46,648 square foot facility for the processing and treating and milling of raw materials. Period. Oh, subject to this...
The restrictions by GCG?
The restrictions by GCG.
The letter of recommendation by GCG.
The letter of recommendation by GCG. How's that?
Second.
Thank you. But I had found the paragraph, so I was prepared to read it again. It's been moved and seconded to approve this special permit, application of the existing industrial site at 1375 Main Street for the repurposing of 46,640 square foot facility for the processing and treating of raw materials including grading, drying, sorting, crushing, grinding, milling, operational use, subject to the restrictions in the letters sent by GCG.
Nice, nice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Pass unanimously. Thank you, write these down.
Thank you, I know, right?
Landscaping.
Landscaping. Just a recommendation.
That's a big one.
Before the snow flies, it'd be good.
We might even have money for that. Capital Planning Committee.
You're four minutes early, doing well.
That's not a hearing, so I'm okay.
It's not, exactly.
Yeah. Welcome, either, wherever you're comfortable.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, well, thanks for the opportunity to meet you for my second time, like I do every year. So I just want to share with you our results of our capital planning deliberations over the last couple of months. So hopefully you've all got the report that we sent over a couple of days ago. So like always, we went through a process where various departments submitted capital requests to, to the town through the, through the administration, and we've got all those requests, went through a process where we ranked them. We spoke to DPW, to the chiefs of police and fire, just to get more detail on the various items. So there were six items that came through this year. They totaled just over $8 million, although it's noteworthy, the biggest one is the water treatment plant for, I'm sorry, water treatment for well number three. That is about 7.1 million. So that's the vast majority of, of the $8 million is for the water treatment plant. The other five projects included a new communication system and antenna on a cell tower over on Norfolk Street that would be used by Public Safety and the DPW as well. Upgrade lighting system for the library. That's a recur, that item's been on the list for, from before, so that was still on our list. Some HVAC repair to this building and also to the fire station. New pickup truck for the DPW, which is replacing a van that they currently use for all sorts of different things around town. And also a new piece of equipment for the DPW called a Vector truck, which is a piece of equipment used to clean out stormwater and drains and that sort of thing. So this is a first for our committee. Actually, all six items hit our highest priority list. Usually, we've got a mix of high and medium and low priorities. Just, but through the ranking process and talking to the various departments, we determined that these were all high priorities per our, just per our process. We also shared a update to our longer-term capital plan. Didn't change too much, we just refined a few numbers from the spring. A couple of things fell off, a couple of things came on. In general, they was roughly the same in total. That is about 80, just under $90 million of total potential long-term capital needs for the town. That's over the next 10-plus years. There are a number of items that are sort of indefinite as to when they would actually be, be done, if, if ever. Some, some may never be done on that list. So that's the highlights, but I'm happy to take any questions that anybody has on any of the items.
I got to sit in all the meetings, so I have no questions. But if anybody else would like to ask something, ask about the Vector truck.
I have pictures.
I know, they're nice.
I just had one up at the farm, taking care of my 12 units. Yeah, that was fun.
Yeah, so it looks like something out of Dr. Seuss.
Yep, it really does.
I did not know what a Vector truck was before, a few months ago, so.
So, yeah, just a few comments on it. We have free cash this year quite a bit, 3.2 million. This would be one of the uses of free cash to pay for the town side of the stuff. There's items that are going to go on, it's all going to be spelled out in the warrant as we get there, but things will be paid for from borrowing, like the PFAS. And the Vector truck will be borrowed, but that's through the, the enterprise funds for a large portion of it. So I think it's, if I recall correctly, like 350-ish?
To the town itself?
Yeah.
That's not through borrowing or, yes. I don't, I don't remember the exact number, but it is, it's a few hundred.
And that's spelled out in the warrant when we get there. So we have more than enough to handle that and still leave a generous amount for the next town meeting. It was interesting, as John said, everything scored high. It was, it was an interesting process. So that's it.
Well, it's great that we can accomplish all of them, so it's good.
All right, well, thank you for your report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, he's been running very short meetings, too, very efficient. We have to commend that.
They had our shortest ever, though, yeah.
I was in another meeting when I ran out, it was over.
That's impressive.
Yes.
All right, see ya. All right. Okay, next item up is approval of extension of the contract with Stumpy's Tree Service.
So I believe you have a letter in front of you that Karen wrote up for the extension of the, of the bid process? So we've, you've already approved the, early in July, you approved the, the monies to be spent on this... So we've, you've already approved the, early in July, you approved the, the monies to be spent on this project, but during the, their contract ends November 1st. And in the contract with MAPC, we have, the town has the right to do two more years of extension. So I would recommend that you allow the town administrator, I mean, Stumpy Tree Service, we've had them for years. We've had very good luck with the last two tree companies that we've gotten with this tree bid, but Stumpy's, I would definitely recommend that you allow the town administrator to sign this extension for at least one more year, and we'll come back again at the end for a third year.
Ready?
Yes.
I actually have this one. I think we should go with Stumpy's, just to say that we have a contract with Stumpy's.
I love the name.
I mean, come on.
That and the Vector truck, that's the only reason we're going for these.
I moved that the board approve the contract extension with Stumpy's Tree Service for a term of one year from November 1, 2023, to October 31, 2024, with tree service rates bound to unit prices listed in the MAPC bid executed on November 22, 2022.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
That's a toughie.
Yeah, it is. Couldn't take attention, that whole one. I moved that, it's been moved and seconded, the board approved the contract extension with Stumpy's Tree Service for the term of November 1, 2023, to October 31, 2024, with tree service rates bound to the unit prices listed in the MAPC bid executed on November 22, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Excellent.
I think I'm next, right, for the?
Again?
A brief conversation about the PFAS plan? Or is that later? Oh, we're not doing that.
We're not doing that tonight. We're doing that the 23rd.
Okay.
Unless.
Unless it's really brief, no.
It is brief. It, it's absolutely.
I was gonna say, it didn't really, yeah.
I mean, as part of the contract with Kleinfelter, they're coming in on the 23rd because we paid them to do it and then they'll be here. Some good news with the, with this contract, as I reported to the finance committee last night. The prices are coming in a little cheaper than we first expected because the supply chain is there, the stock is on the shelves, where before, there was a long wait time for some of this stuff. The, not a drawback, but the $3.4 million that we received through the grant, it's, it's a, it's a process that we're gonna have to handle on, on our end of proof that everything has to be American-made. Naturally, we'll have the assistance of Kleinfelter to help us through that process. But most of it will be explained, we have the plans all done. We're actually starting tomorrow to get on the website and registering this process so that we'll have the ability to start submitting pay recs for this project. You know, we talked to Carol and Mike, the three of us and Jen, we all decide, you know, we're looking for the 7.1 million for the, because of the overall cost of it. We may not have to do that, but we feel it's best for us to appropriate all the funds at this time. Because if it comes back with the, from the state or the government, that in March, April, when we put it out to bid and says, well, you have to appropriate all this, then it's gonna slow the process down. Come, and it would have to wait till the May town meeting. The timeline is for the bidding process, we're looking at April, May of next year, with construction hoping, hopefully to start in like the first week of July. So, and again, the plans and the building, you'll see it all on the 23rd, right?
23rd.
Okay, can you just remind us, this is the third well? What is this?
Yes, you're right, you're correct. It, it, we've, we've done two wells, one and two, at the DeAngelo's Treatment Plant, and this will be well number three, which is in, in back of the Wayland's property, off of Village Street, way into the woods. It's gonna be, it's off the road, there's a lot more involved building this building because there's no bathrooms. We have to install a bathroom, we have to install a septic system, blah, 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 blah. I did tell the FinCom last night that, you know, we're still getting the readings coming out of the raw water system of PFAS 6 in the 27 to 28 percentile for wells one and two. And once it goes through the system, you know, the new treatment system, it all comes back non-detected.
Right.
And it's.
It's excellent.
How can something, these little, it's chakal.
How can it work? How can all that money actually make something work? Right?
Somebody sat there, and, and all it is is chakal. I mean, it's. It works.
All right.
And that's, we're gonna use the same type of design.
And this is the one we decided was the next one in to do?
This is the highest one that could get us in the, in trouble.
And this gets us backups, acceptable levels of water. We have everything else we need. We can probably take a hiatus on doing additional wells for a while after this. But this puts us where we need to be.
Yep, definitely. Great, and we'll see you on the 23rd.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Next item up is the fall town meeting warrant, and it's a short warrant, so I'll just walk through each of the areas and look at it, and we can ask questions if we have them. First up was unpaid bills, and that's pretty self-explanatory. Those are bills that didn't make it in, in time to be paid last year, and it's our legal obligation to pay them, so I think we should. Next up is the, is the HCA funds that are going in for $210,000. I've got this now.
Oh, you have this?
Oh, these are updated?
No, 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 this is, so you received.
$213,000.
So you received an email today with a suggested, or consider, something to consider for article two, I can't speak, for article two, and that would be to add a line for Board of Health at the very bottom, which is part of the opioid funding, and I'm sure Mike would love to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is part of the opioid settlement funds that the town has been receiving over the past year and a half. Beginning at the spring town meeting, we plan on putting forward a more comprehensive program for the use of these funds. But in speaking with the, the town nurse and some other folks that have been involved with discussing the best use of these funds, it was felt that this, this, bringing on a substance abuse therapist, and it's really just one day every two weeks, and this is just for a six-month period from January to June. It would just require $2,520 out of that opioid settlement funds. And again, this would, this would address what we see as a gap in, in coverage to assist the community. So that's the recommendation to add this small amount to this article at this time.
So this is typical, we come back and visit these each, each town meeting to add to it if you don't receive the money as a lump sum. Questions?
Yep. Do we have to open the warrant and add this? No? No.
No, no, you're not. You're not adding or removing articles, you're simply making an adjustment to the articles. This is a very common thing to do. So you can make adjustments to the language of the articles right up until the board signs it.
Official motion to add the opioid funds to this list.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll make a, I'll make a motion, since you have it handy, to add $2,520 for substance abuse therapists using opioid funds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
There we go, just make it official.
Perfect.
Next, the presentation we just heard, the library, the water, the sewer, the town buildings, the fire, the capital planning list, $359,000 of free cash will be used. And then the next one is the PFAS treatments facility in at 7.1 million. Now, the hope is that's lower. You can always spend less, and most of our projects, actually all the projects as of late, we've spent less than what we appropriate, appropriated. So I'd rather not revisit this at another town meeting by trying to guess it to the exact dollar. We won't tax for it, we won't, we won't borrow for it, and we'll only borrow what we need. So if the money comes through from the feds in time, you know, when that comes through, we'll reduce the amount we need, but we're just gonna vote the whole amount.
Kedok.
Okay, and, oh, Mr. McKay left. There's $500,000 for roads and sidewalks in here, which is another big year for us, and this is good to get it early. Vector truck for $573,000, that's being split multiple ways. And it was in the, it was in the letter that was, we received from the capital planning, but it's used for storm drain management mostly, does other things, but that's one of the big ones. And with the DEP storm drain, you know, stormwater management stuff, we own our own. It's quite expensive to bar, to rent one. School bus leases, this will be increasing the amount because there was a shortage in the amount that was voted at town meeting, last town meeting, so this will allow them to acquire. Mike, is it the sixth bus or the fifth bus? I don't remember.
I mean, this is the sixth bus, and what happened is the bus prices came in much higher than originally anticipated. So we, the school asked for a higher bonding authorization to allow them to go ahead and lease the sixth bus.
There's no funding connected to this, this is just the authorization.
The funding comes out of the school budget, but they need, they need the borrowing authorization to actually add to the lease.
Or they're just gonna pay for it out of their budgets.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. OPEB study, $7,800, yes?
I have a question. Joyce Boyardi, 206 Orchard Street. Why do we need a sixth bus?
The intent was always to get six when they put it together, but when they went out for the final bid, get the final quote, they only could afford five because the prices were higher than they anticipated.
And the five can't accommodate?
They do not. That was the discussion we had last fall town meeting, that we needed six, but since prices came in significantly higher, we, we told them they just can't because, as Carol will point out to anybody who'll listen, you can't spend more money than you have.
Right, right.
They didn't have it, so we didn't buy it, but now we have to move forward, going forward for the multi-year lease on it.
Okay.
And I believe, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're using an older bus right now.
Yeah, they're using one of the buses.
So they are using six, it's not like they're just adding the bus.
Oh, okay. I thought, that's what I thought it was, was an addition. So I'm going, well, if we've been working off with five, why do we need six?
That's what I had a feeling.
Thank you.
Certainly.
OPEB actuarial study, $7,800, do those frequently. Oh, the Special Education Stabilization Fund, which we established in the last town meeting and didn't put any funding into it. Carol, it's like 2% is what we, there's 2% of some number we can put into it.
We can put in 2% of the net school spending as authorized by DUCY. So DUCY's net school spending for, Milis for 2024 is $16 million.
So that means this is a maximum we can fund it for, we'll be using our free cash, we'll put it in it to hopefully in the future smooth some of the sped changes year over year. That's the goal, to keep a, a, a piece of money set aside. Purpose.
The most the fund can ever have is 2% of the net school spending for that particular year.
Right, so now if net school spending increases by 3% or 4%, we'd be putting hundreds of thousands in, not, not hundreds of thousands.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, the section 11, 111F is the law we passed, we voted last. And did we have funds in there to get used? Is that the situation with that one?
We, we current, we funded it in last fall with $300,000. We currently have $144,000 in, in there. With the estimate, we currently have three police or fire employees on the 111F, and if we projected that out for one full year, it'd be $273,000. So this will, the $300,000 will bring the fund back up, but hopefully, over time, we won't use all of the 300, but each year we should, should plan on funding it for the $300,000 every year.
Yeah, we need to put something into it each year.
Right, absolutely.
Hopefully it allows. Next one is the OPEB trust fund, not to be confused with the actuarial study, where they tell us we're significantly underfunded, and then we put $50,000 in. We could've put $57,000 in if we just, if we just told them we were underfunded, they believed us, but, so it's good to put money into that whenever we can. And the last item is the stabilization fund. This is putting $700,000 of our free cash into stabilization. That's $400,000.
Plus.
To pay back the sped on the anticipation that we actually use it. We haven't used it yet, it hasn't come out of there, and then $300,000 more going in.
Right.
Now, if, because some people have told me I'm not entirely a pessimist, if for any reason they didn't need the 400 or the state contributed to it, and that 400 never came out of sped, I think we'd have a discussion about.
Whether or not to take it back?
Whether or not to take it back, because it could be used for roads and other things, but at this point, we're just assuming that it's going to be needed because we're gonna need the money out of sped, and I'm going to sneeze, I apologize, trying to fight that off. $400,000 out of sped, out for sped. If for some reason, like the state does fund it or something changes and we don't need it, we'd have a conversation about taking it out without the requirement to repay it, because it's silly just to have it sit there when it could be going to road sidewalks or other necessary items. All right. So that is the warrant.
So do we need a motion to sign it? Motion, yes. Motion to approve and sign the warrant.
I make a motion to, I make a motion to approve and sign the warrant.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the warrant, and we'll be signing tonight in the.
You will, indeed.
We have to come back.
You do not need to come back, I have printed them out.
All right. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, passed unanimously. All right, I'll stop in the back office and sign before we leave.
Well, thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may, I just wanna, we'll thank the board, the board first of all for approving that, and just wanna, special thanks to the finance director and the assistant town administrator for stepping up my unanticipated absence from the office this week. They went above and beyond to make sure we get the document finalized and to you in time to be executed, so I just wanted to forward my thanks and ask that they be recognized for the, for the extra effort. It's good to know there's a team in place to cover when, when folks are not, not able to, to finish the work, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Doesn't mean you're taking another minute, but we got your back.
All right. Next, we have discussed Tri-County Regional VOTEC High School building project. This is an opportunity for us to share our opinions on it, thoughts on it, and this and the upcoming vote on the override, too. I'm not sure we'll take a vote on recommending or not recommending the project, and we'll get into that in a minute, but I'll, I mean, if somebody else would like to start the camera, I could start with sharing my thoughts.
Um, yeah, you can start.
Okay. Well, I'll start by reminding everybody, as Lisa opened the meeting, I will move towards the end of the meeting. There's a vote on October 24th from noon to 8:00 PM to approve a new Tri-County High School, and also a second ballot that's going to authorize the borrowing to pay for it, or authorize the tax increase to pay for it, not authorize the borrowing, but the tax increase to pay for it. Yeah, I've looked over this project for a long time, as most people know, I was pretty vocal about a lot of concerns I had on it. I still have a lot of concerns about it. I just keep coming back to, there is a real need for this project, and we don't have the ability to change it at this point. I've gone back and forth thinking about if it's voted down in all the towns and fails, that sets them back five or six or seven years on the project because they have to get back in the funding loop. But it might also send a message to the state that they have to fix the funding. I don't have a significant issue with the Tri-County School Board's project. I believe it could have been done a little bit on the more cost-effective side possibly, but not dramatically. I mean, now we're quibbling about, about percentages. I have a real issue with the way the state funds it, and there's a lot of bills pending right now that we're going to address how the state funds VOTEC schools, put extra, put VOTEC people onto the school building committee where there currently are none. S, school abbreviation.
SBA.
SBCA.
SBA, SBCA, yeah. To, to represent VOTEC schools in that, because the funding is just atrocious. 30% funding versus 60. There's nothing we can do about that on a local level at all, and I, I don't know that I want to cut my nose off to spite my face to say, if this votes down, make them wait seven or eight years, get back in the funding cycle, hope the law changes, because if the law doesn't change, it just gets more expensive. So I'm gonna just go with what I always go with on these things, vote your conscience and vote your pocketbook. If you think you can, that this is needed and you can afford it, it needs to be voted yes. If you can't afford it, you'll have to vote no. There are a few concerns with campaign finance law also. The board can't take a vote and publish their vote and mail it out to the town. It's a ballot question. The campaign finance law applies differently to ballot questions as, as it does to warrant questions. I know the FinCom has taken a vote on it. I'm not sure that it's prudent to take a vote on this because we won't be able to distribute that vote through any official town media. But again, it comes back to the cost on it. With the state only. With the state only paying 30%, it's very, very burdensome to the town, especially since, since it doesn't automatically entail an override tax increase as a typical building project would. So I'm going to urge everybody, if you're going personally, not as the select board chair, or a member of the, not as select board chair, but I'm gonna urge everybody, if you're voting for the project, vote for the funding. You can't say you're in favor of the project unless you're in favor of funding it. Otherwise, it's like my kids being in favor of a brand-new Jeep and me not having the funds for it, okay? So that's basically what I have to say on it.
No, I, I agree, I think we've already had several meetings, we've had Tri-County come in several times, they're coming in again to the senior center, you can ask your own questions. The only thing that's important is what Craig says, when you come in to vote, there are two votes, and you have to make them sync up. So please, come and vote, no matter which way you vote. Let your voice be heard, I know everybody says, Millis is just such a teeny-weeny town, our vote isn't gonna matter, because it's a cumulative vote, it's all 11 towns. But your vote does matter, I don't believe that for a minute. If we come out in force, it does matter. So please, come out and vote on the 24th?
24th.
From noon to 8:00. Perfect.
And let me know in the registration.
Yeah, we announced that at the beginning.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry.
I will note, too, that I just dropped postcards off at the post office, so you'll be getting some bright yellow postcards, all residents should be receiving them in the mail, it doesn't give opinions, it simply lists the facts of what the, the votes are, both votes, and it gives the times on that as a reminder.
Perfect.
So please look for those.
Karen, did you wanna?
Yeah, just, I did have a couple thoughts on the project, in that, you know, there are renovations that are necessary and needed, and probably urgently so, which, if those were to be done, those could trigger so much more work due to, you know, permitting and things that might have been grandfathered in. So really, once you're done with all of that, you're probably going to be upwards of what the new project would cost with the reimbursement, even if it's not a great reimbursement. So it does sound like that there is a need, and I think everybody should come out and vote on the 24th.
And I just want to go back to the renovation side. When they were here presenting, it was mentioned that if they don't do this project, they'll have to do renovations. Well, they can't do $160 million of renovations without a vote like this, because they'll, it'll require the borrowing also, so they will have to do something, it's going to be the least efficient way, it's gonna be picking away at fixing this problem, then fixing this problem, then fixing this problem, over the next 15 years, so as painful as it is, it's, it does need to be done. Yeah. All right. Any other questions about this?
Nope.
Any comments?
No.
Good. All right, let's move on to the last item.
Okay.
I think it's the last item.
Close.
Close, close, close.
Prove to the Field of Flags, I leave that to Erin.
Okay.
She is a lion.
So, yes, I am a Millis lion, and the Lions Club, in honor of Veterans Day 2023, they would like to host a Field of Flags event. The Field of Flags would be displayed on the front lawn of Town Hall. The flags are a donation, it's a $10 donation, and your donation could be in honor of or in memory of a veteran. All monies raised will benefit the Fisher House of Boston. The Fisher House is a home away from home where our military families can stay while a loved one is receiving in-house treatment at one of our medical centers. Any veteran or active military personnel, wartime or peacetime, is eligible to stay at the Fisher House. The homes are built on the grounds of a major military and VA medical centers. The homes enable family members to be close to loved ones at the most stressful times. There is at least one Fisher House at every major military medical center to assist families in need, and to ensure they are provided with the comforts of home in a supportive environment. There is no charge for any military family to stay at a Fisher House. So this is going to benefit the Fisher House of Boston, and there are forms available, will, can we link to one on the website?
Absolutely.
They're not there yet, but we will put them on. Yep, we'll link to it on the website, and you can send checks to the Millis Lions in Fisher House, and it should be a great event. The flags will be installed on Saturday, November 10th, and would be removed on the 25th.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Lisa Harden, town clerk, just a quick question, Saturday is actually the 11th, November 10th is Friday?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Which is, no, I know, that's what it says on here. Is Friday a holiday?
It, yes.
Okay.
That's what it says on where?
But, this thing, this thing here says it's Saturday, November 10th.
So when, when a holiday...
So is it on Friday, or is it on Saturday?
The holiday is on Saturday, however, the town recognizes the holiday, if it's a Saturday, on the day before on the Friday, so we will be closed on Friday.
But which day are they installing the flags?
November 10th, Friday.
On Friday.
So they are doing it on Friday, but till weekday.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep, Friday, November 10th, to be removed on November 25th.
Okay, good.
Okay, ready?
Yeah, board and committee updates and...
No. No, I have a mo, do I have a... Oh, your motion? I got a motion.
You had your calendar out, I thought you were gonna go through.
I know, no, I was seeing when the 10th and 11th were. I moved that the board approve the Field of Flags event for Veterans Day 2023.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Field of Flags for Veterans Day 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. All right.
Okay. What you got?
Board and committee updates. I got one, capital planning committee, and John said everything that we did. There we go.
Excellent.
I had one, I had the cemetery committee.
Isn't it awesome? I'm telling you, it's the best ever. Everyone wants to go back.
It is, I know, you're not getting it. Yeah, it's good, they're redoing their rules, so it's kind of interesting. Rules as far as sizes of headstones and how many monuments, you can't have a bench and a headstone, you can have one or the other, and you can't, now they want to, used to be able to plant flowers all the way around, 12 inches out, all the way around, now they're only gonna let you do it in the front, because in the back, it's impeding with the people behind. There's a whole thing going on here. Anywho, they're in the process of doing that, so it'll be interesting to see the finished product.
I don't have any.
All right, excellent, well, Ellen wins again. All right.
Minutes.
Minutes, let's approve some minutes.
Three sets of minutes, here they are.